Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Holland City Council for August 3, 2022. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd. Vreeman.
Here.
Peters. Corbin. Coronado.
Here.
Arnsors.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. This evening, we're going to start, as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer. It was supposed to be with Councilmember Byrd, but I think he's running a little bit late. And Mr. Vreeman has graciously agreed to fill in for him this evening, so thank you for that. Tim, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.
Lord, we come before you this evening and we're grateful for the gift of life that you've granted to each one of us and the many opportunities that have presented themselves throughout this day to serve you. And so we'd ask that now that we have gathered here, that you would cause our minds and our thoughts to be clear, that we can make decisions that would honor you and bring the best possible opportunities to our city. We thank you for our city and its leadership, and we'd ask your blessing upon them as they would navigate the many different entities that they serve and manage. Give them wonderful success in their duties. And then we would put this meeting before you, that we would honor you in all decisions, our thoughts, and our language. And it's by your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, thank you again, Tim. Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and have been reviewed by council members prior to the meeting as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the audience or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. In a moment, I'll ask members of the audience or members of council if they'd like to have an item removed, but before we do that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
For A, absence excused. For B, approval of minutes, July 20, regular meeting, and July 27, 2022, study session. For C, Osev Office. For D, city clerk, claims filed against the city. For E, Parks and Recreation, First Amendment to Use of Facilities Agreement with Holland Public Schools. For F, Finance, Set Public Hearing for PA 198 Tax Abatement for Forged by Design LLC, 428 West 24th Street, August 17, 2022. For G, Finance, Engage Siegel Consulting. For H, Finance, Commercial Credit Card Agreement. For I, Finance, Approved Purchase of Utility, Electric Utility Vehicle. For J, Finance, Approved Purchase of Front End Loader. For K, Public Safety Services, Approval of Rifle Purchase from AZ Arms, Inc. For L, Management Administrative Services, Change to the Eligibility Period for Medicare, Medical, I'm sorry, Medical, RX Dental and Vision Plan for New Full-Time Employees. For M, Management Administrative Services, Delegates to Municipal Employees Retirement System Annual Meeting.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond.
Yes, please.
Corbin.
Yes.
Coronado.
Yes.
Arnsors.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for the public to address council at each one of our public meetings. We do have some guidelines and some rules that you need to follow in that regard. We do limit the time to five minutes for each person who wants to speak, and you're allowed to speak one time. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we are strict about that. Please note that this is one-way communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us. We don't engage in discussion or answer questions at this point, but if there's a question that you've got proposed, we may be able to answer that or have staff take care, answer that or respond to that to you in the future. We also ask that you address council with your comments, not other members of the audience. We also ask that members of the audience don't engage in any sort of responses or anything in regard to those comments. Now, having said that, is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward and state your name and the municipality that you live in for the record. Anyone who would like to address council? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Judy Vischer, City of Holland. My comment is, I'm a member of First United Methodist Church, and I'd like to support what you're voting on tonight, the rezoning request for the development there, for affordable housing, and support for the pilot, so payment in lieu of taxes.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time?
Oh my goodness, I guess I'm up with all these people.
And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Bob Ashby, Holland. Holland has enshrined sexual behaviors as a protected class. Problems of this special carve-out of rights were raised to no avail at the time of the nondiscrimination ordinance was discussed and passed. The most important one being the ordinance's ability to technically claim to include religious expression protections while at the same time, skillfully, simply by omission, leaving vulnerable those businesses and nonprofits whose owners or operators run their affairs from a religious worldview or convictions, but do not operate under a religious mission or religious affiliation. The city's repeated claim that religious expression is already protected under a nondiscrimination ordinance, by a mere reference, by Elliot Larson, by the Michigan Constitution, the First Amendment to the Constitution. The fact is, this matter, if this reasoning had been applied to the matter of sexual classifications for protection, that improvement would have never been needed or accepted. Sadly, the council chose to ignore those established protections and create instead a special carve-out for LGBTQ Hollanders. This is a kind of discrimination perpetrated under nondiscrimination statutes. Now, since the city has begun the practice of special protections, it is time to finish the job. It started, and proactively do the same thing for her citizens' freedom of spiritual lifestyles and convictions. As has been mentioned before, the existing double standard has been documented several times over in Michigan and throughout the nation. As the city is aware, the solution is not complicated. It's just easy to ignore. The council would simply add a section to the ordinance which proscribes any rule or policy that allows discrimination against any person or entity in the city on the basis of religious beliefs and includes citizens' right to object to, be excluded from, or be exempted from any religious infringements. If my claim seems to be foggy to anybody or seems to be much to do about nothing, let me offer an example of how blatant First Amendment violations not only could, but do occur. I decide to open up an event center in an old abandoned church building. I go through all the investment, the bureaucratic red tape, set up the facility. Now, I am sure the city council is very much aware of my personal religious convictions and worldview that I and my family both treasure and live by. So after a short period of time, I'm approached by two folks of the same sex who want to get married using my old church event center. I politely decline the offer, reminding them of other very nice facilities in the area, and after leaving, they promptly file a complaint. Under our current ordinance, if I don't play ball, just as is the current case right now in Grand Rapids, I have no religious protection. Just as is the case in Grand Rapids, all I have is an expensive fight I can't afford, defamation of myself and my business, and the city pulling my business license. The moral and spiritual convictions by which I structure my life have been weaponized against me. The religious community of Holland did not create this situation, but if it has to exist, our actually constitutionally cited liberties need to be equally and affirmatively protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
I'm Gordon Weersma, from the City of Holland, resident and a pastor at Hope Church right across the street. Counsel, I want to express my support of what is referred to in the agenda as the Dwelling Place First Hope at 10th Street Housing Initiative. And I believe that it brings together institutions and people and resources in a way that we can often only dream about in our city. It brings together two congregations with over 300 years of presence here in Holland, so we think we have something to say. We believe that we are trusted, we have stayed, we believe that we are neighbors, we care about our neighborhood, and we learn from and are grateful for our neighborhood and neighbors. And with that 300 years of experience, we had the wisdom to bring in an outsider here into Holland. I know we're a little suspicious of that here, but Dwelling Place is an impeccable, stellar Grand Rapids nonprofit with a wonderful foothold here in Holland through the midtown center. If you look at Dwelling Place's record, it is impeccable, their reputation and their long-term commitment to the projects that they develop. It brings us together with government, with you, the City of Holland, with state and federal programs. It brings us with housing next, with Ryan Kilpatrick and his great leadership. It brings us into the political realm, which is just where we belong as congregations, because that is where we speak to justice for our community. It brings together different people out of silos in which people so often live or are forced to live in, and brings them together into community. It brings together downtown and neighborhoods, that is a border which our two congregations have lived on and thrived on for years. We know that that is good, and we know that by being there, it will welcome and invite people into downtown who have not always felt invited there, and that they will thrive and connect to neighborhoods too. It brings together a community for the basic goodness of housing. There's much political difference and division, and I and many feel passionately about that and will speak to that, but almost everyone I see in the political realm speaks about the need for good housing and affordable housing. Holland City Council, I believe that you are on board for this project, but I want you to know that you are supporting something that is bringing together what is best in and for our community, and it's done in a way that we believe can be replicated and multiplied for the kind of community we can and need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Martha Capistani, and I'm from Holland. First of all, again, I'd like to thank you all for your service. I know that you do a lot, a lot of long hours. My situation is kind of interesting. I have returned tonight to reread the comments I made on July 20 regarding Gay Pride Month. A couple of my family members had viewed the video online that day. They said that there was some sort of glitch, and when I viewed it myself, I was quite stunned at what I saw and heard. The movements that appeared while the video was playing matched what I was saying at the time, but the audio was doing something completely different. Now, I've returned to reshare what I said that evening, however, have been informed that it has been cleared up that the video is working now, but I still think it's worth saying again what I said. So, a little bit about me, I've participated in sports my whole life. I've also been a coach for students from kindergarten to adults. I've also taught K-4 children's ministry for over 20 years. I've had various opportunities to perform in music and act in various venues, so that's a little bit about me. I do have some comments and concerns regarding Pride Month. I picked up a brochure in downtown Holland to learn what was happening, and I hope to attend some of the events. However, I was unable to do so. I was really glad to see that there was an 18-plus age restriction on the adult comedy show and the drag performance. I hope that remains in the future. However, as I was looking through the Sentinel about past events, I came across an article about a drag brunch at the Civic Center a couple of years ago. It did have an 18-plus age restriction, but for some reason, 15 minors were allowed to attend on a first-come, first-served basis. It didn't make sense to me to have an age restriction and then allow in some random number of minors to attend. I did not attend this, so I do not know if there were young children there or not, but I'm concerned that it was portrayed that way at all. Unfortunately, this year, many events during Pride Month in various cities devolved into overtly sexual inappropriateness during parades, concerts, and shows where children were present. One instance happened in the city of Dallas at a gay drag bar. It was promoted to something to the effect of "drag your kids to brunch," and it's family-friendly. While children were seen handing money to the drag queens, others were uncomfortably walking down the catwalk with a sign at the end of the runway, which if you want to know what it says, you can look it up for yourself. It wasn't good. Now, there are many more examples of these types of things, but that's just one. You see, our children are over-sexualized and exploited at a very young age in so many ways. They are extremely impressionable and often cannot process, understand what they are seeing. And I can't understand why seeing large human men dressed improvocatively in women's clothing, often with fake female parts, extreme makeup, where their man parts packed away, is something for young children. You have this, and then you have this. It's strange, it's confusing, and often scary all at the same time. And even as I say something like that out loud, it just sounds wrong. I also came across a statement in an article that I found very disconcerting. Our state attorney general, Dana Nessel, made an off-color remark about having drag queens in all our schools. I think she was kidding, but if you don't know, there are already states that are bringing drag queens into libraries and schools. Drag is sexual in nature with sexual themes exhibited throughout. I hope in our city and state, we keep these adult performance, this adult performance art where it belongs, in adult clubs, and not in our libraries and schools. We don't go out of our way to have burlesque story hour or brunch. We don't promote exotic dancer story or brunch. I think you get the point that I'm trying to make. So my hope is that we continue in the future, as we continue in the future with Pride Month in Holland, that appropriate boundaries remain in effect for family-friendly events and age restrictions remain in place for adult entertainment. Unfortunately, we have seen through the years how these things can devolve, and we need to make sure our Holland families and their values are preserved, protected, and respected as much as anyone else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Deborah Cryavano, live here in the City of Holland. And I'm addressing the issue about the rezoning for the Dwelling Place's building that they are proposing rezoning for over here on 10th Street. First of all, there's a whole bunch of different issues. I went to their meetings. They were very rude to us, would not let us ask the appropriate questions when we started talking about parking. They basically asked me to leave the meeting. They would not let me ask any of those questions regarding the parking issues, which is the number-one problem. It had, originally, I just want to say, I think the church had good intentions to start some low-income housing for, they were thinking, a few families. It has now morphed into something involving two buildings, three stories high, and if you rezone it, apparently it's going to allow them to go six stories high if they should choose to desire, because once you rezone it, I believe it's going to allow six stories potential for that area in the middle of a residence. Big problem is the parking situation, however. They're allowing one space per tenant, which is definitely not adequate. I don't know about you, but I don't know very many people anywhere that have less than two cars in their family. They're talking about having people like a single mom there with a teenager. She's going to go to work. How's her kid going to get to school? Do you know Holland High does not offer busing in that area because it's less than one mile? I know, because I live just right here in the same area. So they'll need a second car. The grade school kids are going to need a second car. Maybe if they're low in income and they happen to have a significant other or spouse, they're going to need two cars for two workers. Where's this other car going to go? They're only allowing 100 spaces. If they are handicapped and need a care worker to come in, where's the extra car? If they have Christmas relatives or tulip time people come in on the weekends, for instance, where are they parking this car? All winter long, there is no parking on that street. We've spent lots of money to have bike lanes there and to make it all safe. We have the winter snow rules, like I said, so there is no other place to expand for the parking. Already, we've got other things being proposed, I know, along, between Collin Park and along 9th Street there. There's overflow from other neighbors. I'm not personally involved with that, but there's a lot of people on 10th and 11th that complain all the time. They're getting overflow already from the Civic Center, from Collin Park, tulip time, doesn't matter. Do you know what their answer to this solution was when I proposed it to Dwelling Place? They said, "Well, they can park the extra cars over on, in the 7th Street garage." Okay, so their elderly mother that wants to come visit is going to have to park on 7th Street and at night walk over. What if they forget their medicine and they have to go back? They're going to walk three or four blocks to get to their car every time? How about the suitcases they have to bring to stay overnight? This is nuts. One place per person, and they're not making them regulate to that. Okay, going on from that. I asked them about grocery store. They said there's one within walking distance. Which one, I asked? DSW. DNW, I mean. And I said, "Okay, so you're asking special needs people or elderly people or low-income people now to walk across the bridge, walk across multi-lanes of traffic of their special needs, go to the grocery store, and can carry all their groceries back?" That is not a very convenient walk. I don't consider that very close to a grocery store. When asked about employment for these low-income people, they said, "Oh, well, they can work downtown. There's all those boutiques that can hire them." Okay, those are private businesses. Most of them have a handful of employees. I don't think low-income are going to be able to work there. Most of them are going to get their jobs in a different area, maybe Meyer, Walmart, you know, credible places, but I don't think they're going to be working downtown Holland. Not very many. So they're going to have to drive, which brings us back to the parking issue again. Okay, then the price. What's the average price going to be? Well, they said $1,000 a month. Is that low income? Really? Even one of the people working for them said, "Oh, yeah, I know, I could maybe qualify." It's not really low income, is it? Hmm. Okay, mentioned height of the building, six stories, it would be potential for them once you pass the zoning. Safety issues. They've got special needs they want to address. They've got homeless people, they've got, you know, alcoholic problems, whatever comes in, whoever wants to be there.
Mr. Mayor, that is fine. I'm sorry, ma'am, your time has expired.
Okay, no one there after 5:00 PM?
Thank you.
You should read the reviews. I'm sorry, I didn't realize the time.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
But read the reviews, dirty and not great. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Michelle Cryavano, I live in Holland, Michigan, and I would like to continue her thing to read some of the reviews that, as the Hope Church pastor said, that the reviews were great. You should look it up yourself. They are not good reviews. And many people that I talked to about this dwelling place that we've talked to, they all said, "Look at the reviews, they're horrible." The people that worked there, this says, this is somebody that worked there, a former employee, they said, "Building I worked in was nasty, trashy, people lived there, bedbugs in apartments, odor of weeds in hall, weed in hallways all the time, gang members lived there. I moved a bed once to get an outlet, and there was a handgun under the bed. Come out to find out, a felon was living there, not the safest place to be if you get called in at night." That's just, there's lots of reviews like this. Another one that says, "These people are here to help people get on their feet," basically, "but when they are so unprofessional, rude, disrespectful, racist, and just downright wrong. They treat you like crap, blame you for something that you did not do. The Westons have been through four property managers in three years, and none of them could keep up with fixing what the previous manager did beforehand. They did not know how to talk to people, and when they get, when they get you, where they want you, they basically laugh at you." There are lots of reviews like this with this place. This is how Dwelling Place treats their people, and I experienced it personally at their meetings. This is another one. It said, "I worked for Dwelling Place for Grand Rapids for years. Dwelling Place does not pay you what you're worth. They claim that they cannot afford to raise, give you raises due to the economy, but yet they still continue to build and remodel buildings like they're trying to do here. They also do not promote within the company as far as low positions," it goes on. "They do not care about the safety of their staff. Their buildings have drugs threatening residents to staff, and they could care less." These are people that worked there for years. They know what they're talking about. This one actually, this one says, the clients that she works with are living there, they have mental and physical disabilities, alcoholism, substance abuse, and homelessness. It's challenging all the time. These are the kind of people that are supposedly going to be there. That means we need better safety restrictions. This is another one. It says, "I do not want to live in this location. They have homeless shelters, there are no parking rates, the door is not coded," as she was saying, "the security reasons with all this stuff. They don't have people, safety, they're only going to be there until 5:00 PM, somebody at the door, so if you've got somebody with Down Syndrome or a disability or something, they're trying to promote this as a safe place? It's not. There's not going to be coding on the doors, they're not going to have somebody there if they need help or assistance, but apparently we're going to promote this for disabled people? They need help. This is not help." There is, I don't think there's, there's different things nearby that, there's homeless shelters, they were saying, around these different places that they were talking about. And this is just a handful of the reviews that were there, and there's tons of them online that talk about this. It is not, and it's not at all what it was originally intended to be. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, thank you. I'm Terry DeYoung, live in Holland, in Holland Heights. Thank you. I've lived in the City of Holland since 1983. My wife and I, Cindy, have lived at 960 East 10th Street in Holland Heights since 1994. In the early 1990s, I was a founding board member for the Center for Independent Living that's now called Disability Network Lake Shore. I'm still active as a volunteer with Disability Network Lake Shore. I've served as the coordinator for disability concerns for our church denomination, the Reformed Church in America, since 2009, and I'm a member of Hope Church. I have attended probably half a dozen public meetings this year about the, what we're calling it now, First Hope on 10th, including last week's study session. And I fit the, it has my full support, this development for affordable accessible housing on West 10th Street. I urge you to vote yes on the rezoning requests and the payment in lieu of taxes exemption. I have lived with a degenerative disability my entire life, and it's quite possible that a few years from now, I will be a wheelchair user. And so- And so this summer, we are adding a large porch with a ramp so that we can stay in our neighborhood and age in place in the home that we've lived in for the past 28 years. We enjoy living in Holland. We want to remain as contributing residents who have access to what this great city has to offer everyone. And I am grateful that Cindy and I have the means to do this. I'm also aware that this is not the case for many others, including many people with disabilities. It's important that we move forward with this development because it addresses three huge barriers that face many people with disabilities. One is affordable accessible housing near downtown. A second is easy access to fixed bus routes and public transportation. And I think that third, with affordable housing that's accessible to downtown and public transportation access, it opens the possibility to full-time or part-time employment for those who do not drive throughout our city and its surrounding areas. I appreciate the engagement of our community, of our city staff, and I was grateful for your questions, your observations during last week's study session. And I think I know your heart on this issue. It was two years ago this month, August 2020, that you voted eight to one to approve changes to Holland's anti-discrimination ordinance. And that ordinance included protections that, the amendment included protections that impact people with disabilities, along with the LGBT community and many other groups that previously were not covered under the ordinance. One of you said that night, a very long night, I know. One of you said, "It's time to invite our neighbors, all our neighbors, to sit beside us, to let people know that they truly belong and that we are glad they're here." Another of you said, "We should view this amendment as a step closer to realizing equity and inclusion for all in its broadest sense, and I sincerely believe this will serve us all." Voting yes tonight on the rezoning requests and the payment in lieu of taxes exemption is consistent with your vision and the vision that we all have for the city of Holland. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henry, San Zelen. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for all you do for Holland and the surrounding areas. They're just as important as Holland itself and they influence the surrounding areas. But things are changing. We're talking about the 2020 ordinance. We're talking about now it is an old law, so to speak, because the years are going on. And so the repercussions of that, we have people speaking about it this evening. And, but there's another thing that might be happening that wasn't intended for the ordinance. Very interesting about the abortion laws in many of the states. Kansas openly supported the access to abortion in all areas, even passed viability standards to a full nine months. The citizens fully supported their 1857 law of abortion rights for permission for those underage teens to access abortion. Being lifted is now very probable. The people of Kansas fully supported yesterday the old lawmaking. It truly applicable to the present advancing sexualized culture of the day. Even with current three-dimensional ultrasound showing the facial features of a human life and unborn child fetus is now totally dispensable and irrelevant. Like New York and California, even with specific proof of human being forming in the womb, abortion rights now are, make that irrelevant. In contrast, the old 1931 law in Michigan prevented any abortions, but because of Roe versus Wade removing abortion from federal jurisdiction, passing these abortion judgments take back to the states now. Michigan prevents any access to abortions, not so fast. Our Attorney General refuses to prosecute any doctor who performs an abortion, even though the old law is in place. I'm talking about laws and how we approach them. And now for the ordinance. I wanna say, oh, the reasonings of man. This brings me to Holland Anti-Discrimination Ordinance for Housing and Employment that redefine sex as sexual orientation. Now with the current sexualized culture supporting gender confusion and many sex celebration, sexual orientation celebrations, we encounter this in the 2020 law. A sidestepping of your legal verbal declaration pledge to actively protect religious freedoms, but permitting the active, the advancing infringements of sexual orientation people group. The city lawyer said you would protect religious rights and speech, but with your fingers crossed behind your back. Did you ever think that when you vote for the ordinance for the goodness of having all people, having a home and a job, you would be advancing an ideology that will affect the family structures and sex education of our children in Holland and surrounding areas? If you did not intend the Pride Celebration in Holland, you are now uninformed. You pass the law, but do not participate in the law. Did you know that the drag show performers are now being promoted for children engagement? Kalamazoo had a large family drag show on Saturday afternoon. Some of the attendees got on the stage and began to emulate a strip show. There was a police presence, but they did not stop any of these actions. August 20th, 2022, Analogon is another event of drag show performers specified for children's entertainment. I suggest you attend even though it does not, may not be interested, you may not be interested in it. Be assured, next year's Pride Month will be again the mayor's declaration. Think also the way of the Human Relations Commission has sponsored the 2022 Sentinel Park event of sexual orientation. We can be assured that the children's drag show is in our future and possibly in our library or in our churches. If time permits, council's reaction after ordinance passing. You might remember my phone call to some of you. I did call some of the members here and their comment about their ordinance was they did not see any problem with having.
Mr. Mayor, it's five minutes. I'm sorry, your time has expired. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is, my name is Robert Charo and I live in Lake Town Township. I'm addressing the council as the co-chair of Hope Church's Disability Housing Task Force. I just wanna take a brief moment for two thank yous, okay? I've been thinking back to when we first walked into this building with a dream to engage with the city staff. So my first thank you is to city staff who have been very supportive and very helpful throughout this entire process. They've helped us to reframe and rethink the project and helped us along the way. So I'm appreciative of their efforts with that, okay? And the second thank you is to the mayor and city council members who have made positive comments about this over, and encouragement over these past few meetings that we've had with the city concerning this project. So I just wanted to say thank you to both of you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Marge DeBlay and I live in Park Township. I had no intention of speaking this evening, but listening to some of the comments, there's a few things I'd like to clarify. People with disabilities, many of them, such as my son, should he get into the apartment there, bring their Ottawa County support system with them. So right now, my son has somebody who comes to the house once a week and works with him on cooking. He's building his own cooking skills. But there are multitudes of things that can be provided for support. The county right now does not count the time I give to him to do many things for him. For as long as I'm alive, I'm figuring I will still be providing some support for him. But those hours, they have Ottawa County Community Mental Health has a whole system for going through what he does, what he needs assistance with, how much time that would take and how many hours of support he should be able to have when living in an apartment. Many parents have already looked into, there are electronic systems that can be put in place. For example, you might be able to monitor who's coming to his door if you want to and say, "No, don't let that person in." My son, I think, pretty much knows who not to let in anyway already, but other people have that. You can have a monitor under the bed. So if they have a job, you will get a notice if they haven't gotten out of bed at the scheduled time for them to be able to get ready and to go to work. The, and I'll say one other thing I said last time. The ability of our kids with cognitive disabilities, we've made a lot of progress since the Right to Education law came into place. My son is still learning things all the time. He surprises me often. For example, he has a hard time speaking clearly, but even that is becoming better. And I find out all kinds of things. Like the day he turned to me one day when I, he'd said something and I'd given him a kind of funny look and he looked at me and said, "As clear as a bell." I was being facetious, Mom, and using it appropriately. And the need, the variety of levels of services that are needed for our adults who have cognitive disabilities cover a wide range. Not every kind of housing is gonna be appropriate for everyone with a cognitive disability. My son loves his freedom. He loves it and asks me if I haven't been out of the house for a couple of days, if I'm gonna go somewhere tomorrow. He wants this free time and in private time, just like anybody else does. There are ways to deal appropriately in a situation like would be given by Dwelling Place and the need is great. There are virtually no adult living options available other than everybody live in the same house and do the same thing all day long together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yeah, Dr. Peter Christensen and I live here in the city of Holland. So I came, wanted to show support. I was a family physician here in town for 18 years now. The first 11, I worked at Intercare on the north side, which took care of low-income migrant farm workers, the people that are quite disadvantaged. And one of the biggest issues recurrent was the lack of quality housing and also convenient housing. People kept being forced further and further out of town to poorer and poorer living situations, which because of cost, they couldn't afford to live closer to jobs, family, work. But then transportation became an issue. It's got a kind of a spiraling cascade of problems that these people encountered. It's harder to get to work and they had worse employment, which just furthered the cycle. So when we started attending Hope Church and this whole idea of the dwelling place and we learned about, I was very excited because one is very needed and I enjoy being part of a church that's taking this on front and center, along with the other church. So I just wanna show my support and as a family physician, I can say quality housing that's affordable makes a huge impact, not just on the housing, but on their health, on the family, on the family structure. So anything we can do to have more people living closer to town, wherever they work, just being close to a bus line, at least gets them to where their job is much easier than living way out in a trailer park, in a camper on friends' backyards. I mean, people are very desperate for housing and I've seen, and I still have patients that struggle with that and they move to a place that they can afford or their friend says, "Yeah, you can live here," and they can't get to work because it's so far away or it's so remote and cars are expensive, gas is expensive. So sure, they found a house, but now they can't get to their work. So it's like this cycle just keeps going on and on. So bringing people into a convenient location that's also affordable is good for them, but also good for their family, their relatives, and the courts of the community because they can be great workers and if they can get to their job, then it's a win-win for everybody. So I just wanna show my support for this affordable housing and of course, the disability side is huge also. They're both hugely important. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yeah, Mihai Cryavano, live in Holland here. I want to refer to this rezoning for this new facility involving Hope Church and intentions are always good, but not every intention leads to good results or fits the right place. I attended several of these meetings. I didn't hear any commitment from this church other than selling the land and making money on it. I don't blame them, it's their land, they have the right to do so. But I didn't hear any commitment of them being actively involved, helping these people if there is a need as they're gonna become neighbors to this facility to help financially with parking, with any particular health situation. Didn't hear a word about that. Maybe they're doing something about it, wasn't transparent to the meetings. I was very, very disappointed with the personnel of this company that's taking over. They were rude, they were disrespectful. They ask people to shut up when they're asking legitimate questions and other people are offended, they say, "Hey, these are the people who are asking legitimate questions. Instead of answering them, you tell them to shut up because it's not your agenda for today." And when somebody pointed to me the reviews online about facilities they have other places, such as Grand Rapids, I checked them out and I was vividly appalled. I expected to be lukewarm reviews, something like this. It was absolutely embarrassing. If this is what we're gonna do for the people that need help, this is going to be a problem. This is poor quality planning, this is being rushed. A lot of people have a lot of questions in this community, on the neighborhoods. We asked about the water pressure. We know when the Washington School development was done, the water pressure was visibly lower in this historic district. Now we're gonna have another issue and they said, "Well, they're gonna check with BPW." They're gonna get back to us. Never heard anything from that. Evidently, the water issue is gonna be a valid one. There is a lot of questions. For some reason, this seems to be. For some reason, this seems to be a rush to do something. I totally understand the need for housing. I totally understand the need for facilities for people with disabilities. We can all probably, you know, as we get older, may have disabilities. That's totally understandable, but this is not how we do things. I am all for quality, not for rushing things, for the good of common good. Yes, good of common good, but it has to have logic, responsibility, and thorough thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Lori Muchler, and I live in Park Township, but I have a son with a disability that lives at Centennial Park Place. And he was one of the few fortunate five, 15 years ago to get into Friendship House. And at the time, there were three openings, there were six openings, but there were three available, and there were over 50 applicants for those three positions for adults with disabilities. Such a tremendous need for that in our community. And I, but I just wanted to address this, the gentleman that just spoke. This has not been rushed. I'm a member of First United Methodist Church. We have been talking about this, working with the community, working with Hope Church. This is going on into the third to fourth year that this hasn't been rushed at all. And the other thing, and I feel bad that maybe it hasn't been relayed, but the building that is going to be built is only going to be three stories. It's not going to be six. And the other thing is, it's going to have a community center on the ground floor that Hope Church and First United Methodist Church will be involved with for engaging with the people that live in that house, live in the housing, just like we have been working with Community Action House to get these people jobs. So I just wanted to share, this isn't rushed, and we are going to be working with the people that do live in this building. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the opportunity for people to address us directly at council meetings, we do have an email address that you can use to send comments directly to the city council. That is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We receive a number of those generally between our regular meetings. We do not read them out loud at the meetings, but we do accept them into the record. And I would entertain a motion from council to accept those ecomments that we have received into the record.
Move to accept all ecomments into the record?
It has been moved by Aaron Sors, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item 10A rezoning request. 94 and 98 West 9th Street, 57 Part 85, 91 and 95 West 10th Street from the FCDT to FCENT Zone Dwelling Place. Mr. Finn Dyken. I looked the wrong direction. I'm used to seeing Keith.
No, we're going to look in that direction really quick here. This is the first of three items on this evening's agenda that are really all tied quite closely together. As we've heard through some of the public comment, really it's two rezonings, and then a municipal services agreement and a payment in lieu of taxes, and that's towards the end of the agenda. These two rezoning requests come following the site plan approval by the Planning Commission. So that step of the process has been done, and Steve may speak to that a little bit as well. But they come to you on the recommendation of both the DDA, the PSD, and the Planning Commission. So with that, I will have Steve come to the podium and talk through some of the implications of what the rezoning request actually is and where it is.
All right, thank you, Matt. Good evening, everybody. I know there's a couple slides in your packet. I'll try to describe these as best I can. So as we've talked about, this is really one of two rezonings that are associated with the, I guess what we're calling the Dwelling Place rezoning. This first one kind of highlighted in the yellow outline there, north of 10th Street, just east of Pine. The First United Methodist Church is zoned in the Form Based Code, the Central Downtown District. That's sort of that pink or red color on the map there. The Hope Church on the south side of 10th Street in the green is zoned Form-Based Centennial. So that distinction is important because the project that Dwelling Place is doing, as Matt has mentioned, has already been approved by, the site plan has already been approved. In the green area, the Centennial Form-Based District allows for multifamily housing, allows for an apartment project. In the red, in the Central Downtown District, it does not. So you can build a mixed-use development in the Central Downtown District, but you couldn't build just a straight apartment project. So that's the reason for the rezoning. The rezoning request would extend that green, the central, the Centennial District, north to, in that outlined area where the First United Methodist Church is. So that is the rezoning that is on your consideration for tonight. A couple things, really what I describe as the main differences in these two districts. As we've mentioned, one of them is just that use, being able to put up an apartment building. And really, the other one is really setbacks. In the Central Downtown, as you know, we allow for the zero lot-line type development. In the Centennial, it's a minimum of a five-foot setback. So all of the other zoning provisions really are the same, including, we've heard a little bit about building height. We allow for six stories in both of those zoning districts. So the zoning change doesn't change any of that, really. It's just being able, really introducing the apartment use, and then that setback is really the only differences between there. This map doesn't do a great job of showing it. I know you've got a little bit in your packet in terms of just this transition area as really as you go from the residential development off to the south and west towards downtown. This really is forming that transition as you get to downtown. This is really on the edge of the Central Downtown District. I think I've got a picture. This is just a snapshot of the master plan, the future land use map. And I know the colors are a little bit different, but essentially, you kind of have the same thing being illustrated here, that you've got the more traditional neighborhood residential to the south and west, and as you go into downtown, this is sort of the edge of that area. So as staff looked at this, I think as the Planning Commission looked at this, it seemed like a logical step to be able to extend that green, that Centennial portion of the Form-Based Code, north of 10th Street there, just east of Pine. Planning Commission has recommended unanimously to support the rezoning.
Any questions from council for staff? Mr. Corbin?
Just to clarify, if without rezoning...
Yep. Just to clarify, without rezoning, it would require, and if somebody wanted to put apartments into this area, they would be required to have some business element as part of it, correct?
Right. They'd be required to have what you would maybe look at, or the audience members would think of as the stuff that you see on 8th Street, let's say, where you'd have the traditional business on the main floor, and then you could have the apartments above. They certainly could do that. That was not their plan to have any kind of commercial component to it. But that would certainly be permissible without the rezoning.
Yeah, but without the rezoning, they would be required to do that.
That's right.
They would have a mixed use. They would have to have some element or proportion of it being business.
To have the residential use, you would have to have that commercial mixed-use component, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? Nikki?
So in this little scheme here, schematic, the area outlined in yellow, that would be green if this again...
That would turn to green, yep.
And then they will each be two stories. But should it be possible, if you can do that, they could add on in the future. I mean, they're not going to do that, but you know...
Yeah, right. So maybe not to delve too much into the site plan stuff, but the apartment building proposed on the, approved on the First United Methodist in that sort of pink color is three stories. The building on the Hope Church property is two stories. But to your point, yeah, six stories is permitted in those districts. They'd have to come back and get, you know, approvals from the city, of course, for that. But my point was, is that both of those districts allow for six stories now. That doesn't change with the rezoning.
Yeah. It is a transition area, as you say. It makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Yes?
Steve, you said you, your office or your department approves it. Can you just let me know why you guys approve it? I mean, that's permissible.
Why we recommended approval of the rezoning? Again, because it seemed to us that it was in this transitional area, seemed consistent with the future land use plan, with the standards, which I know are in your packet, I know I didn't go over those tonight, but felt like this rezoning request was consistent with all of those.
Perfect. And I know there's a new building on 10th Street? Wait a minute, I'm thinking. What street am I on? The corner where they're on, is it 9th? How many buildings, how many floors is that? 9th and, it's the newest?
Where the old Harbor Bay Furniture.
Is that six, or is it, I mean, less than six?
It's, I don't know for certain how many stories that is.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it's probably going to be, I mean, the Dwelling Place isn't going to be much different. It's not going to stick out like a sore thumb because it's right across Kitty Corner or somewhat to that degree, and then we have the parking lot. So to me, I mean, it doesn't really seem, I mean, I know someone said that it could possibly be six, or you said it could possibly be six, but that's not the intention here.
That is not what has been approved. It is three stories on the project north of 10th Street, and it's two stories south of 10th Street.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate or explain a little bit about, most comments from the audience have been in favor. There have been a couple not in favor. So the ones not in favor, there were issues of parking and shopping and transportation. Can you talk about those a little bit?
Well, I guess the way that I would sum that up is, and again, maybe coming new to town, being very impressed with, you know, our Unified Development Ordinance that you folks built. I guess I would say to meet all of those requirements. Admittedly, you know, there's a few things in there that we have built that give discretion, you know, landscaping and other different sorts of things. But I guess the way I'm answering that is, they've crossed a pretty high bar by meeting all of our requirements in the Unified Development Ordinance, so, which includes parking. So, you know, they're held to the same standards that we hold others to. So I consider that to be a significant bar to get over.
And it's really, I just want to make sure council understands, it's really easy in these situations to start getting into the site plan discussion. All we're looking at right now is the rezoning of it. And site plan has already been approved by Planning Commission. What we want to make sure that we're focused on is what could be built here if there's the zoning change, regardless of what the current site plan or the current project is in front of us. And so I just want to make sure that we're sticking with that.
And I appreciate that, and I agree. I just want to make sure people know, we hear you, and we hear their complaints. But yes, this is a site plan. I mean, this is not a site plan, this is just the rezoning.
Just the rezoning, just the rezoning. Ms. Coronado?
And so with that being said, so the parking, one spot is adequate. You feel sufficient? Because I know there was a question about the parking, one parking for each of the...
That is what we require for our residential use, is one space per unit, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? I've got a couple, just to make sure, Steve, I'm clear on this. The differences between switching it from one to the other, if it, if we do do this rezoning, they're not going to be required to have commercial on the front, on the first floor, which they could have had in the Central Downtown, but that's not allowed in the Centennial, correct?
So in the Centennial, you can still do the mixed-use development?
Okay.
So the only change is, is that we're introducing the allowance to really just do the apartment?
Okay.
So all of the other uses that are in the Central Downtown are still in the Centennial? We just introduce an additional...
All right. I worded that the reverse of what I meant. So they are, they're not going to be required to do the commercial on the first floor? And what, and then height does not change?
Height does not change.
The height limit does not change, parking limit does not change?
Parking does not change.
And if I heard you correctly, are setback requirements actually greater in the Centennial than they are in the Central Downtown?
Correct.
So they're actually going to, they're going to have a smaller building envelope with this change than they would otherwise?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments from council members? All right, let's take these, one, the rezoning request, one at a time, because I think we're looking at both A and B here. Am I correct on that on the... Yeah, because we've got, we've got the, both the, we've got the rezoning request for 94 and 98 West 9th Street, 57 Part 85, 91 and 95 West 10th Street from the Central Down, Form-Based Code Central Downtown to Form-Based Code Centennial. And that's item 10A. What is the pleasure of council in regard to that item?
Move to approve that as presented on Agenda A.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion from council members? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Now, item 10B rezoning request, 100 West 9th Street, 27 and, excuse me, 227 and 231 Pine Avenue, 99 West 10th Street, from Form-Based Code Central Downtown to Form-Based Code Centennial.
Move to approve as presented in item B.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, this is the same, this is the same project, it's just two different property owners, correct? I want to make sure we're not jumping the gun on this.
So it's different property owners, it's not part of the Dwelling Place project. It is separate from that.
It is separate from that.
So we overjumped.
So we jumped over. We have, we do have a motion, we do have a motion on the floor. I don't believe we had support for that motion. Are you interested in withdrawing your motion at this time, Mr. Vreeman? All right, Mr. Vreeman's withdrawn his motion. Mr. Peterson, would you like to explain to us item 10B, please?
Sure, real quick, yes. So again, kind of the map that you see there highlighted in yellow are the properties subject to this rezoning. Really, we're describing this as city-initiated rezoning. As a result of the Dwelling Place rezoning, these properties that are left on Pine Street would be left in the Centennial, in the Central Downtown zoning district. So it was our thought that that rest of that block, if you will, out to Pine Street would be rezoned as well to the Centennial. So everything north of 10th Street in these two yellow areas that we just went over would turn to green. The thought was, is again, just sort of removing that remnant piece of the Central Downtown. And again, the thought was that by having it go to the Centennial, that that introduces this additional use that gives those properties a little bit more flexibility. Admittedly, they're small pieces, but maybe together, if they were all in the Centennial, maybe there would be the option of doing a similar apartment project. So yes, separate project, all somewhat related, of course, but we thought it would be nice to sort of clean up the rest of that block. So Planning Commission recommended approval of this as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions from council members in regard to this item? Yes, Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, Steve, could you go back a slide to that, to the, oh, sorry. So, no, yeah, what's up with...
Stop it.
Sorry, my...
What's up with the house that's...
Yeah, down sort of in that lower right-hand corner? That will end up becoming parking for the church.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, real quick.
Yeah, Mr. Corbin?
So all these property owners, clarify who the property owners are. Are they part of the church or independent property owners?
Independent property owners.
No opposition, make sure it's like...
I think we may have.
Lean into that mic, Mr. Corbin.
I think we may have heard from one of them at the Planning Commission meeting that wasn't supportive of the rezoning.
And if something like one of the homes were to burn down and they wanted to rebuild a residential property, would that be non-conforming?
So it's non-conforming right now. And maybe even more so as central downtown since the residential use isn't even permitted without the commercial component. So it's, it's not conforming right now. It's in the Form Base District right now.
So nothing will change for the non-conforming for them?
I think it opens up another opportunity for them with the rezoning rather than not rezoning it and keeping it in the central downtown.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff members? Mr. Vreeman, what is the pleasure of council in regard to Item 10B rezoning request for?
All the engaging conversation. Move to approve Line B as presented.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Any discussion from council members? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Now, a completely different part of town. Uh, Item 10C rezoning request for 533 to 147th Street, Future Gen Michigan LLC. Mr. Van Dyken?
Yes, thank you. So this is one of those properties that recently was annexed into the city from Fillmore Township, if you remember correctly. Um, the thought process behind that annexation is that those properties that were likely to become industrial should be coming into the city and actually receive the city services that they would need to become industrial properties. Uh, so this is an opportunity, uh, to actually take that step, rezone that property to industrial and have an industrial project out there next to a very, very large one that is well underway right now and moving a lot of dirt with that. I'll give it to our planning staff.
Well, you stole all my thunder, Matt. Um, uh, yeah, so when these properties came into the city, they came in, um, they were zoned R1 in Fillmore Township. So they come in as LDR, Low Density Residential for the city. Um, that's my attempt in that upper left-hand corner there to describe, uh, that zoning district that it really has come into the city as. Uh, the proposed zoning change would change it over to what you see on the right-hand side of the screen. So really what we are talking about is the 33-acre piece that sort of wraps around, if you will, that, um, uh, the yellow, uh, that's still left on 147th Street. What is left on 147th Street are three homes, uh, three residential homes, um, that are there today. We have met with those folks. We did, uh, kind of go through with them, what, uh, the rezoning would be about. Maybe they would want to be part of the rezoning, a little bit similar to what we just talked about. Um, and those folks were not interested, um, in being part of this rezoning. Um, what's different than the last one is that, um, as I described before, those other properties were already part of that district where they were non-conforming. These guys are not. So what is in front of you tonight is the rezoning from LDR to industrial for that 33-acre piece that is wrapping around, uh, the rest of what's left of the residential piece. So again, Planning Commission, uh, took a look at this and unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning.
Yes, Mr. Hookstra.
Uh, part of, at least one of the parcels that's being excluded there, that's the old historic mission.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, it is.
Okay, now they're not freaking out with all this new stuff around them? Probably they are, I don't know.
Well, again, you know, we took the time to meet with them and chat with them a little bit about it. You know, I think, you know, they were kind of weighing the pros and cons of, you know, what to do, um, you know, whether or not somebody could figure out something to do with that historical, um, house. Um, you know, I, I don't know, but, um, it's certainly something that we've talked about, um, talked to them with, about as well.
So they have an understanding at the very basic level of what's going on around them and what to expect.
They should, yep.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Ms. Arnsors?
Were they, were they the same people that came before us with LG Energy? Yeah, so they?
The folks that, um, participated in most of those meetings were a little bit further to the south and to the east. Um, I, I didn't recall meeting with any of these people during that process.
One of these three property owners did come to the Planning Commission and all they asked is that they would not have their property rezoned.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, so as many of you know, I've been very opposed to moving away from LDR for any reason. But I just wanna clarify that I'm supportive of this because of where we're looking at in relationship to what's around it, right? And that's very important for us to be looking at those things. And so it's never, uh, that we don't rezone LDR. We, we do it where it's appropriate. So I just wanna make sure that's, that's on the record.
Any other questions for staff members?
I, yeah.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm still sort of on the fence about this one, Steve, and I was, I was wishy-washy at Planning Commission. I did ultimately vote yes. Um, it's a little bit different for people to say that they understand that, that they don't wanna be rezoned. It's another thing to say, I'd prefer around me wasn't rezoned, it's industrial. Like, I'd prefer it would stay, um, LDR or residential. So I wonder if, if there was any feedback in, on that question as opposed to just, just don't rezone us? Would they also have said, I'd prefer you didn't rezone it at all?
Um, yeah, I guess I can't really speak for them, but I guess I would say that I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be surprised.
You didn't hear that from anybody.
You know, they certainly heard, I guess, what I would describe as maybe the typical concern that you get about, you know, just sort of rezoning or, or development that's occurring around you that's different. Um, uh, Matt has already alluded to the LG project, which from their backyards, you see happening as if it is right in the backyard because, you know, that project is so big. Um, and so I guess I would say, you know, certainly heard the typical concerns that you hear, but, um, I mean, it is all industrial, um, all around them. So I don't think it's a, a complete surprise either.
I do have, uh, I do remember, um, and maybe, Mayor, you remember, maybe you remember this differently, but I, I sort of remember the LG Chem doing something on the north side, or what side of that, which way are we looking? The, the side, the side that faces those, those residential properties, um, doing some kind of construction of that side so that it wouldn't be offensive to the, to the neighbors.
Yeah, Steve, Steve may be able to speak to that better than I can. But I remember there's a, there's a wall there and there's, I know that there's vegetation buffering and wasn't there something with a, yeah, with a berm or a retaining wall along that side?
I know there was to the south. Um, I just don't know if there was any to the east. I feel like there was a conversation about that as well. And so then it feels like we've sort of defeated the purpose of creating that kind of, um.
Well, ironically, yeah, yeah, you're right. You're remembering it correctly. There was, because of this zoning on this piece of property, even though it was in the township, we still, we still treated that border the same as we would our own code by saying, hey, if you border the residentially-zoned properties, you have to provide that buffer. And so their LG provided a buffer around that whole, um, north and east side of their property. Now, what we were buffering, what they were required to buffer is the piece of property that we're talking about tonight that's turning to industrial. Um, and so essentially what would happen is if the piece of property that is subject to the rezoning tonight were to develop, then that buffer, um, now admittedly, it won't be LG anymore, but, um, that buffer would essentially shift north to, to help buffer, um, I guess what I'll describe as the real residential properties, the one that actually has homes on them. So they would be required to meet those same buffering requirements that we held LG to, even though the piece of property LG was buffering was a vacant piece of property. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Yeah, and that's, and that's something that'll be dealt with at the Planning Commission level if and when a site plan comes before Planning Commission on this.
Correct.
Yeah.
So these three properties that are not being rezoned, are they, will they still be conforming? Cause they're in LDR or are they?
Yeah, they would still be conforming. I mean, I, I can't speak to every building, whether or not that meets every, you know, setback or something. But, um, in terms of the use, yeah, that use is a permitted use in the LDR.
And if they had been included in part of this, if they wanted to be included in this rezoning, would that have opened up more opportunities for them, as you said with the last request?
Well, it would, it would be a little bit more difficult. It may have opened up some, you know, opportunities for them to, you know, sell or develop their property a little bit easier because it would already be industrial. But they would have become, uh, non-conforming, grandfathered. So then you have all of those things that come along with that. Um, and that's the, that's some of the discussion that we have with them so that they understood what that means.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? What is the pleasure of council in regard to Item 10C rezoning request for 533 to 147th Street?
Move to approve rezoning request for 533 to 147th Street, Future Gen Michigan LLC.
Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra, any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna say, I was just looking at the, at the, at the criteria for rezoning. And while it, um, it, because it wasn't in the city, it does feel like it, it makes it more complicated to, to, to apply the criteria. Um, but it does appear that based on the criteria that rezoning, um, would be appropriate here.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council members? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Uh, Item 10D, proposed text amendment to Chapter 26. Mr. Van Dyken?
I am not stealing anyone's thunder on this one or the next one. So we'll just have Steve come up. Or Tricia.
This is my one item on the agenda, so thank you for having me tonight. We'll give Steve a little bit of time to breathe before he comes up again. So, I have a real quick slide. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. This is Chapter 26. In Chapter 26, it talks all about public lodging, hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts. Steve's gonna talk to you about some Udo changes next. And in the Udo changes, we're making a separate category for shelters. So we wanted to make sure that same category was replicated in Chapter 26. So the only things that are changing in 26 is we're adding a definition for shelter. And then we're making sure that shelter language is being captured throughout the rest of the ordinance the same as public lodging. So everything will still apply. The same inspections will be done. They'll obtain an annual license from the city clerk. Um, they're held to all of the same standards. We're just adding in a definition and making sure that they're captured the same as they are now. The only other clarification we're making is any facility under the exclusive control of the state of Michigan is not required to get a license from the city clerk. So that would be adult foster care homes are licensed by the state as well as nursing home facilities are licensed by the state. So we don't get an extra license from the city clerk. But anything else, um, that's a shelter or a public lodging facility are licensed by the city of Holland.
Any questions for staff? Kathy?
Yeah, one quick one. Under the old conglomeration, um, lodging was covered under a nondiscrimination ordinance. Can I assume that, um, this new definition maintains that, um, nondiscrimination status subject to the exclusions of the ordinance itself?
That's a great question.
Thank you.
Maybe we should pass that one to the city attorney.
Yeah, Vince.
Mr. Duckworth?
Yeah, that is a good question. We'd have to take a look at the language to, because this is introducing, obviously, a new definition, shelter, which probably wasn't in that ordinance. So we'd have to look at that to see, you know, can that be viewed as also applying to public lodging house, which appears to be, um, you know, the intent to the extent that it's in the same chapter and talks about residential care facilities as well. But it most likely didn't use that same phraseology. So we'd have to look at that.
It would probably be worth our benefit to check that out sooner than later. Thank you.
Mr. Corbin?
Likewise, I have a question on the definition. So it does mention emergency. So I would assume that there's a family emergency or something happens like maybe a fire. But what about like a disaster? Um, would this be one of those exemptions in the state law that would allow for a facility to become a, an emergency shelter or counter care facility?
Great question.
I meant to ask it last week, my apologies. And I just now remembered it, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Better ask it before we get.
So we put a lot of different potential situations in this definition on purpose to make sure that situations could be covered in the future, even if they don't exist now. So I had that same thought, is we know that there are emergency shelters, cooling shelters, warming shelters that go into place all over when there's a need. So those would be covered under this. I suspect if it's temporary in nature, we probably wouldn't get a license for it. But if it was a permanent facility, then we would. So yes, those will be covered.
Yeah, I believe we can supersede state law too. And I think super, you know, state law itself probably indicates that it's permissible under those conditions. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council in regard to Item 10D, proposed text amendment to Chapter 26?
Will we approve?
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Vreeman?
Do we need to get the answer on Dave's question earlier before we approve it?
We don't need to. The question is, do we want to?
Well, as the one who made the motion, I would be perfectly comfortable moving ahead with this and receiving clarification later. But I appreciate the concern.
All right, any other discussion from council? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsorsd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Uh, item 10E, round five of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, chapter 39. Mr. Van Dyken, who's going to pass it to Mr. Peterson?
In round five, and I've figured out finally that I can't read the screen, so I, I have my, it's only taken me five rounds to figure that out. So Tricia has already talked a little bit about, um, this round, so I guess this round I'm describing it to be a little bit more substantive than maybe just the general corrections that we have been kind of going over. There is maybe a couple of those in this round too, um, but I don't consider these to be vast changes either, so, um, uh, public lodging, shelters and care facilities, that is really sort of the genesis of, of this round. On your screen on that left-hand side is our section that talks about, uh, public lodging. So just a couple corrections here, um, you can see in the zoning districts that, uh, where it's permitted, we're adding the RMU and GMU. Um, that is really not a change, they're already permitted in that district, they just weren't listed, um, in that run there. Um, and so then, of course, we're getting rid of the additional review process, uh, for those districts to be special land uses, because they're not special land uses, they're permitted uses. Um, and then getting rid of the minimum, um, square footage and the maximum amount of days, um, that you can spend there. So what's happening with public lodging? Public lodging is really just turning into what we will use for hotel motel type use. Um, and then you can see further down there, we're striking out the shelter language. Right now, it's sort of that blend, uh, between those uses, so we're separating those two, um, really the hotel use and the shelter use. Um, and so public lodging will become for hotels, shelters, we, we have a new definition, uh, Tricia has already shared it with you, um, and that becomes its own, um, category. So that's really what you see happening on the right side of your page. That's the, um, uh, part of our table of uses that are permitted, and what you see happening there is, uh, public lodging stays the same. So as I mentioned before, those are permitted uses, that's all of the, the Ps that are there, the P stars. Um, and then we add shelters, and then we add shelters to the same zoning districts where they were permitted before, when they were combined with the public lodging, and the same process. So everything stays in the same columns of same zoning districts where it was permitted before, same process, P stars. So all of that stays the same, we just separate those two, uh, uses from one another. And then the other change that you see on that page is nursing homes are, are stricken out, and we use the word care facilities. The idea there was that to capture a little bit more, uh, uses than just nursing, uh, homes, um, and so we use care facilities, and there's a new definition in here, um, to go along with that. Everything else stays the same in terms of the zoning districts that are permitted in. The one change that, uh, we wanted to make is, um, in the HDR district, right now, a nursing home is permitted, um, right, and we would want to change that to, it would still be permitted if it was under 20 occupants. If it was over 20, it would turn to a special land use. So that way, if it was a little bit bigger project, it would give the planning commission a little bit more discretion, uh, to review, uh, that type of use, uh, during the approval process. So that is the one change, um, that we have there for what was nursing homes to care Next two pages are those definitions. Uh, the definition on the left is, uh, the new one for shelter. Um, 'cause I won't try to read that, but, um, uh, and then on the right-hand side, we have the new definition for care facilities. And as I described before, that, the intent with that one, uh, was to capture a few more uses, and so at the end of that definition, we do use some examples, um, including nursing homes, home for the age, convalescent home, and rehab clinic, all of those sorts of things, among others could then be, um, and under that category of care facility. Sticking with the definitions, um, in the nursing home and that, on the left-hand side of your screen, nursing homes, so we just felt like we could strike that, uh, now that that is part of the care facility. Um, and then over on the right-hand side, adult foster care facility, just adding some language about those uses being typically, uh, regulated by the state, just adding that language, more of a clarifier. So the rest of these changes, um, that you'll see are really in these tables that we have in the document, uh, in the Unified Development Ordinance, that would really just put into place what we've already talked about. So for instance, on the left-hand side, in the HDR district in their table, you can see on the bottom, um, nursing homes, uh, goes out, care facility goes in, and then up to 20 occupants stays as the permitted use, and then over 20 is the special land use, and then it gives you the, um, section of the ordinance that you can, uh, get some more information from. And so then you just, you kind of see that same theme, the CMU district, so each of these kind of has that same theme where everything that we just talked about, kind of making the modification to care facility or inserting shelter gets put into each of its proper zoning district. Um, and then, uh, at, towards the end here where we've got, uh, where we introduce the care facility and shelter as that, uh, P star, the, the permitted land use with some standards, so because that wasn't in that column before, we just simply add that at the end, uh, both of those uses. And then over at, on the right-hand side, you can see we just have a space in there for the care facilities and shelters, and that's where we would have, uh, the information that actually has some of the standards in it as well, which is what you see on the left-hand side of your screen. Um, and then that refers to kind of what Tricia was talking about earlier with some references back to, um, chapter 26, um, as well. And then I'll just note, for the, uh, care facilities, um, there is the provision up there, I know it's hard to see maybe, but all outdoor patios and outdoor recreation areas shall be screened, uh, from adjacent residential uses. So again, HDR, uh, district, if somebody wanted to come in with, even with a smaller project, there's a standard in there, so we would make sure that, um, uh, some of that stuff would be screened, um, if necessary. And then on the right-hand side, you've got the, uh, introduction of the care facilities as the special land use if they were over 20, um, occupants, so then we make that modification, um, in that column as well. That is Udo 5.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, questions from council members?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Arnsorsd.
I don't even know what my question is, but, um, I'm especially attuned to care facilities being changed, nursing homes, because in the Board of Appeals, there was an application to, for special, special accommodations for a former nursing home to be changed to a drug addiction rehabilitation center. And the applicant did not want to wait till this changed. So it's not necessarily a bad idea, um, having this place change, um, uses, um, but it makes me think care facilities, uh, is, is a general term, and I think a drug rehabilitation center, drug addiction rehabilitation center is quite different than a, your average nursing home, and, but it's all care facilities. So I guess you're taking care of any possible issues by the 20 people, 20 residents and under, or 20, that it has to go through, um, the proper channels versus just, yep, you can, you may do this. Is that the thinking?
That was, that was sort of the idea. Um, right now, you, you know, we don't have a, um, I guess I'll say a, a row for, uh, you know, the use that you described, or, or, or others. So yeah, the idea was to sort of have something that capture a bunch of those, and then because of that, um, that's really the idea of introducing the special land use requirement to make them go through that extra, uh, level of review to do something, um, in the residential district. Because right now, you know, although it's under the title of nursing home, uh, we have other uses that are permitted in the, um, in the HDR district, um, in particular, I guess I'm thinking of, we've got something called services and offices and, and the nursing home, you know, so when it's left to interpretation, you know, could something go in there, then that would just be permitted use, that wouldn't have to go through that scrutiny? Um, so yeah, that's the long answer to say, yes, that's what we were after.
Okay, good, thank you.
Other questions for staff? I, I just had, Dave, this is, this is for you and for, for Vince, I had a thought, well, in regard to your question, in regard to the last item which relates to this, we didn't actually use the term, I don't believe, public lodging in the antidiscrimination ordinance, but rather public accommodations, um, which is a, which is a broader term, so I'm, I'm sure our incredibly able city attorney will, uh, confirm or deny that at some point in the future after he has a chance to actually look at the language, but just to help us sleep a little better tonight, that, that may be helpful information. Um, other, other questions for staff members? All right. Uh, what is the pleasure of council in regard to text amendments round number five to the Unified Development Ordinance, chapter 39?
Move to approve text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO number five, chapter 39.
Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Freeman?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsorsd?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, item 12A1 Declaration of Surplus Property, Mr. Van Dyken?
Yes, this one comes from our friends at the BPW, said Dave Coster's here, and he's going to be handling this item and the next item on the agenda.
You must have snuck into the room when I wasn't looking, Mr. Coster, welcome.
I'm sneaky that way. Good to see you all this evening. Uh, mayor, members of city council, tonight there are a couple items here dealing with, as, uh, the assistant city manager mentioned, surplus property that has been declared as such by the Holland BPW, and now seeking your concurrence with that. Um, the subject property is on Hillside Drive in Lake Town Township, actually it's along the Lake Michigan frontage there, it's about 325 feet of frontage and a total acreage of about just under 24 acres. This property was purchased back in 2001 strategically to position the BPW, uh, in a way where if there was a significant increase in demand, uh, in our southern served areas for water, that this could be a possible site for being able to draw water off and treat it to supplement our water system. What's happened since that time though brings us to a different direction as a utility in the fact that we have made an interconnection with the city of Wyoming, uh, to their water system, which allows us to not only use, uh, that interconnection for emergency backup, but in the future holds the prospect for being able to, um, draw off supplemental water use if we get to a point where we exceed the capacity in our water plant. It also, uh, since that time, we've made a third water crossing across Lake Makatawa so that we have a significant amount of capacity to serve water into the city from that northern area. So in the future, as we're looking at water supply, it's more likely that we're going to have, uh, a situation where we would use that interconnection with Wyoming to a certain point, and then probably expand the water plant that exists along Lakeshore, um, Drive, as opposed to building on a site, which would have been challenging, uh, to say the least, to build on, uh, should we have decided to do that on the southern area. In addition, uh, this property is not currently being used for, um, a utility purpose, and therefore it is a taxable property, and it has a, uh, a burden to the BPW of around $50,000 a year in taxes. And so the BPW and the staff have looked at this and said, uh, you know, our recommendation is that we declare that property as surplus, and in doing so, then that would lead us to the actual disposal of the property, which is the next item that I'll talk about. Um, but in doing so and declaring a surplus, we never want to say never, and so one of the things that we would do along with that is make sure that in some way, whether it is the identification of an easement on that property that would be, um, put in our name, or whether something would be reserved there, that would be something we'd work out, um, as it relates to the actual disposal of the property. Uh, but something on there, should we desire in the future to have a water line put into Lake Michigan so that we could draw off water for an inland, uh, sourced water plant in the future in that location, we wouldn't be foreclosing on that altogether. And so the recommendation for the first item, 12A1, uh, has to do with approval of the declaration of the property at 4036 Hillside Trail, uh, as surplus and no longer required for utility purpose, and that is our recommendation.
All right, questions for staff?
I think we pretty much discussed it at the study session. I mean, it's remarkable, it's a remarkable piece of property. To call it surplus just doesn't seem adequate, does it?
Motion for 12A1, declare surplus property?
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Uh, support by Arnsorsd, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsorsd?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Uh, I'm going to just pass this right back to you, Dave, for the second piece of this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so the second piece of this has to do with the actual disposal of the property, and, uh, what some may know or may not know is, uh, at, at home anyway, those that are watching, is that our city charter has some, um, specific, uh, limitations on the powers of city council as it relates to the disposal property, uh, that would be on waterfront. And this property is a waterfront property. It is also a property that is utility property, and because of that, the same requirements really hold in both cases, uh, and that is, in order for that property to be sold, um, the city needs to be enabled to do so by voters, uh, the, the city populace here gets a chance to weigh in on that, and there's a threshold of a 60% positive vote to enable the city to be able to move forward to sell that. So with the assistance of the city attorney's office, there's been drafted in your packet a resolution for your consideration tonight, uh, which would, uh, if approved, um, cause this, uh, ballot language that's associated with the attached resolution to be forwarded on to the clerks of both Ottawa and Allegan County for placement on the ballot for this November 8th, I believe it is, is the, uh, the actual election for the general election coming up here, um, on, uh, November 8th. And so, uh, the recommendation tonight, uh, coming from our Board of Public Works, again, with the assistance of the city attorney's offices, requesting the city council adopt the resolution approving ballot for proposition to authorize the sale of 4036 Hillside Trail in Lake Town Township.
Great, thank you, Dave. Uh, any questions from council members?
Motion to approve.
I've just got one question I want to ask him first, if you, if you know my thanks, Scott. Um, I just, just for clarification purposes, Dave, because this property is located in Lake Town Township, when it comes to this ballot proposal, it's only going to be residents of the city of Holland that are going to have the ability to vote on this, is that correct?
That's correct, and, um, you know, one other clarification I might make, uh, because we didn't review the ballot language in detail, but there will be information that, um, should this, you know, meet the favor of the council tonight and get put on the ballot, that we will help with that educational process, is that another thing that should be noted is that the beneficiaries of the sale will be the water utility customers, um, of the BPW, so that's where the proceeds would come back to.
Won't go into general city funds, won't go into general BPW funds because it's a water utility property, it, those are, uh, separate funds for each one of the utilities, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, great. Any other questions from council members? Mr. Corbin, I believe you had a motion?
Well, I'll clarify one, link two as well, 60% of those who cast ballots, not 60% of the populace.
That's right, 60% of those that actually vote in the general election, so it takes a 60% positive vote.
With that said, I'll, I'll make a motion for item 12A2, resolution adopting ballot for, uh, pro, pro, proposition to authorize the sale of 4036 Hills, Hillside Trail, Lake Town Township.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsorsd?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yep.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Uh, next item on the agenda, item 12C1 Dwelling Place, First Hope at 10th Street, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, a Pilot, Development Agreement and a Municipal Services Agreement, Mr. Van Dyken?
Yes, so we had talked about this more at the beginning of the meeting, but this is a municipal services agreement in the amount of $20,000 per year, uh, and a payment in lieu of taxes of, of 4% of net shelter rents, I believe this is the correct term. Uh, we have represented this of the Dwelling Place here today, uh, if you have particular questions, this is a city attorney report, so our city attorney can clarify anything that may be in there. One thing to note is there is an exhibit that is not included in your packet. It's my understanding that that exhibit would need to be amended, where once the Dwelling Place would receive an award from MISTDA based on their final allocation standard. So this, this pilot will have to be amended with that, it's called the, uh, Final Selection Criteria at a later date.
All right, great, thank you, Matt. Any questions for staff? Mr. Hookstra?
Yeah, the, uh, $20,000 and the 4% of net rent, that's pretty standard fare for these are similar to others I would have done with that.
So this was a presentation from Mr. Kilpatrick to you, uh, last week, if in the study session, and I believe those are fairly standard, he's obviously our resident expert and I am not, so I do not do many of these, um, but it is my understanding, and I get a head nod from the folks from Dwelling Place, that it is a standard, um, setup in this type of a financial package.
Just making you earn your pay, tell me.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, any other questions for staff? What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
I thought Vince was going for his microphone.
Oh, okay. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve, as asked presented for Dwelling Place.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman, any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that, um, this is a, uh, we've, we've talked about this project, yeah, I would agree, this has been going on for several years, I remember having a conversation with folks at First United Methodist Church, five years ago, four years ago about this, so this has been, um, uh, long in the works. Um, and I think we talked about this a little bit last week at the, the study session about how, um, we're a collaborative community and we do things together and work together. And I think that, um, this kind of project really shows how the church has contributed significantly of their resources. Both churches have done that, Dwelling Place has offered their resources to this project, the community has offered their, their, um, their social capital to this, to this project. And I remember, Dave, several years ago, when you were having an argument, actually, not an argument, a discussion about, um, whether or not we should approve these kinds of pilots because they, they're, they're, they go for a long time, and you said this is the, this is the cost of, 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 of doing this kind of project, and so that's the contribution, I think, that the city offers, is the ability to, to offer this kind of financial incentive to, to move this forward, so I'm just excited to do it.
Any other, yes, Mr. Freeman?
I just want to echo that and maybe even broaden it even further, that I am just, um, I really applaud these different communities, the First Church, Hope Church, the Dwelling Place, of working together and collaborating. And it would be my hope that you've, as you've heard different concerns, that you would raise up others like you and younger generations to continue that and to keep that investment in places like the Dwelling Place. My challenge to the Dwelling Place would be, this is Holland and is a very unique community with cross-pollinization between faith communities, nonprofits, educational systems, the government systems, working together to make our community what it is. And so you have lived that very, very well, and I commend you and I thank you for making that happen.
Any other discussion from council members? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Coronado.
I'd just like to say that I'm grateful to be a part of this community and I'm thankful that we're an inclusive community and we want everyone to feel like they belong here and we see you and we see your value and we couldn't do it without one another, so I think we're stronger together. So thank you for, you know, the people that have worked on this and contributed and the support in the community, so thank you.
Anyone else? I've just got two items, one quick disclosure, in case anybody does a really, really deep search into my CV, I actually worked for Dwelling Place for a few weeks in the summer of 1989, between college and law school, but that would not impact my vote one way or another on this. But in this age of the internet, I would not want anyone to think that I was somehow trying to cover up those, I think, three weeks that I worked for Dwelling Place. I would also rather not anybody, you know...
You don't recuse yourself.
Yeah, no, I don't think I need to recuse myself in that regard. But that did give me some experience with Dwelling Place and the values and what they do and that does, that does impact how I feel about Dwelling Place in this. But the other thing that I think is really important, and I really, I want to commend council members, I also, as Mr. Freeman said, want to amplify and extend what they've said because this is a great project. This is a great collaboration between organizations within this community, without this community, people stepping up and doing what's right, but also, council living out its values and its priorities. We have said that trying to find ways to provide more housing options for more people in this community is one of our top priorities. And we have worked very diligently to do that and voted in favor of a lot of projects over the years that have ultimately not come to fruition, not because of what happened here at the city level, but what happened at the state level. And whether or not our voting to approve this pilot and this municipal services agreement and showing that we are willing to put our money where our mouth is in this will have any influence at the state level with Lytech funding or not, I don't know. But I do think that it's very important for us to continue to not only say what we think is important, but do what we think is important. And this is a very important thing for us to do, to make sure that all communities within this city have great housing options. And we need to do what we can. We can't do everything, but we can do this. And I applaud the groups that have put this before us, and I am very happy and very excited, very pleased to be able to vote on a project like this. With that being said, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnzors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, communications from the assistant city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have gifts?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Did I skip over gifts? I did. Oh, I see, they're not bolded on my agenda. It's not bolded on my agenda. So, sorry about that. Do we not have any gifts this evening?
We do.
We do, I'm sorry. Hey, Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Downtown Group, Winnebago Island Gardens, donations to purchase a bench honoring Pat and Tom Grusko. Mary Ann Lee, $76.25. Amanda Grusko, $326.25. John Grusko, $76.25. James Grusko, $326.25. Maude Jupani, $25. John and Susan Hutchison, $50. Public Safety Services, Police Operations, anonymous donor, $40. Public Safety Services, in memory of retired Sergeant Robert Di La Luz. Gary and Kelly, excuse me, Gary and Kelly Swingers, $125. Cynthia Fickle and Gregory Hansmeyer, $50. Holland Police Department Employee Coffee Fund, $100. Parks and Recreation, Kids Triathlon, in-kind sponsorship donation from Good Inc., $300. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great, thank you, Kathy. What is the council's pleasure in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve, set of gifts with token of our appreciation.
Moved by Coronado. Is there support?
Support.
Support by, was that, Aaron Sors? Thank you. I didn't look quickly enough. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, communications from the assistant city manager.
Thank you. So two items for me tonight. The first one is, is in late July, we were lucky enough to host the Michigan Municipal Executive Summer Workshop here in Holland. I gave Keith a ruthlessly hard time about, you are really showing these guys what you've got and they don't. And it was, it was, it was, we are, we've got a lot of really good things here. And talking to the different city managers and county managers, all the administrators from around the state, it's always a good experience to talk about what you do in your community, what they do in their communities, and it's really a good reset, I think, for Keith and I, just to be thankful for what we have here that a lot of communities can't dream about. So I think we should all be thankful for all the things that we have here in Holland and the city council that we have, the citizens we have, and all the investments that have made this, I think, the best city in the state. So just a rewarding experience, good, great to have all those municipal executives here in town. And thank you to the mayor for giving the, basically the keynote on that one.
And I was introduced as the mayor of the City of Grand Haven, which was a wonderful experience.
It crossed my mind tonight, but I thought better of it. And then the next one is, next week, Wednesday, for the study session, we will be doing something that we haven't done in a number of years, and none of, some of you have never been on, is we're going to be taking a city tour. So we're going to get in the big DeGraff Nature Center van and we're going to go kind of tour the city, some of the projects that have happened over the last several years where we haven't been able to put a bunch of people together in a bus and go around. A lot of investments have been made. I know that a lot of you get to a lot of places, but we're pretty sure that all of you don't get to all the places, so we want to make sure that we do that. It'll be the same schedule as a normal study session, just dinner beforehand at 5:15, and then 6 o'clock, we'll kick off the tour. So with that, I yield the mic.
Great. Thank you very much, Matt. I have a couple of items this evening. First item I have is an appointment and a resignation. I'm just making sure I can get it on my screen here. Come on, computer. Are we sure we have fiber broadband here in the... I had it there for a second and I lost it.
Beth Snyder.
It's, no, it's not pulling up. Does anybody have a copy of that?
Yeah.
The attachment for the agenda? I, thank you.
Oh, do you have a copy?
Thank you. Everything else I've got on paper except for this one. I'm making the recommendation that the city council approve the appointment of Beth Snyder to the Holland Board of Public Works with her term to expire June 30, 2027, and also to accept the resignation of Dr. Sue Franz from the Holland Board of Public Works effective immediately. And I request a motion to that effect.
So moved?
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And would you pass that back down? Thank you very much, Lynn, I appreciate that. And I have two proclamations this evening. One, I had the honor and the privilege of actually reading on Sunday night at the 50th Anniversary Celebration Event for the Hope Summer Repertory Theater, which was a phenomenal event where they brought people back from all 50 years to reminisce, to enjoy great performances, and to celebrate the past, the present, and the future of the theater. And it's, I don't know if it's been widely shown in the press, they've changed their name and they've changed their mission a little bit as of Sunday night. It's no longer the Holland, the Hope Summer Repertory Theater, it's the Hope Repertory Theater. And they're going to be doing performances year-round, starting this year at Christmas, and doing it a variety of times, not just in the summer. So my proclamation in regard to the Hope Summer Repertory Theater 50th Anniversary. Whereas, established at Hope College in 1972, the Hope Summer Repertory Theater, H S R T, is West Michigan's premier professional theater company and produces plays and educational programs of the highest professional standards that address the needs of and enhance the quality of life for Hope College and the West Michigan community. And whereas, since 1972, Hope Summer Repertory Theater has been bringing in theater goers from throughout the United States and has grown to become a cultural beacon in West Michigan. And whereas, from its inception, our founders felt that in order to nurture our relationship with the community, we must provide an array of productions, a mixture of musicals, comedies, dramas, and classics, while providing educational opportunities for students, young professionals, and their patrons. And whereas, they envisioned a theater program that not only entertains, but challenges and enhances our worldview, a theater committed to diversity and inclusion, a theater company in relationship with our community that we can support and call our own. And we continue to dedicate ourselves to those ideals each season and work diligently to bring a summer of exceptional theater. And now, whereas, we all get to celebrate a true milestone for any theater company, the 50th season. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and member of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim July 31, 2022, as the 50th Anniversary of Hope Summer Repertory Theater in the City of Holland, and I urge all citizens to celebrate this milestone anniversary with the Hope Summer Repertory Theater and show support for their organization, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland this 31st day of July, 2022, Mayor Nathan Box. And they do still have performances running through tomorrow night, so all, so you've got, you've still got a chance to see a performance this year, and they are doing, It's a Wonderful Life. At Christmas time, they're going to do Wonderful, It's a Wonderful Life. And then also, proclamation in regard to our National Farmers Market Week, we have one of the premier farmers markets in the country, deserves celebration every Wednesday and Saturday throughout the season, but this is their week as well. Whereas, the United States Department of Agriculture has officially proclaimed August 7 through 13, 2022, as National Farmers Market Week alongside the National Farmers Market Coalition. And whereas, the State of Michigan ranks only second to California in agricultural diversity in the entire country with more than 300 different commodities. And the food and agriculture industry contributes $104.7 billion annually to the state's economy. And whereas, the Holland Farmers Market has been owned and operated by the City of Holland since 1977 and has been serving customers for 45 years. And whereas, the Holland Farmers Market brings the entire community together at 8th Street Marketplace in downtown Holland every Wednesday and Saturday. From eight, the livelihood, support the livelihood, support the livelihoods of livelihoods of nearly, of nearly, of nearly, one, of nearly 100 local food producers and farmers throughout each season, while recognizing their hard work, determination, stewardship to the earth, and entrepreneurial spirit. And whereas, the Holland Farmers Market is dedicated to providing access to fresh, healthy, and locally grown food for all members of our local community and working closely with our partner organizations to reach this goal. And whereas, the Holland Farmers Market plays a vital role in our local economy by supporting local businesses, business owners, and serving as a unique and vibrant destination to West Michigan visitors year-round. And whereas, we celebrate the dedication and hard work of all of those who make the Holland Farmers Market possible and thank all of our market patrons, past and present, for their unwavering support. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, invite the community to join the Holland Farmers Market in celebrating National Farmers Market Week from August 7 to 13, 2022, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland this 3rd day of August, 2022, Mayor Nathan Box. And then I have just one additional item. Kathy, I hope that you're still awake down there after a long night. Last night was Election Day yesterday. I want to thank Kathy, want to thank her staff, all of the volunteers who worked the polls, for another great election. Hard work goes into it for weeks and weeks, if not months, in advance. You've got a, what, about a 15-minute break before the general election preparation starts for November, correct? Five-minute break? Five-minute break? We'll allow that.
Is that too long?
Yeah, we can, we can give you 10 if you need to, but thank you for that, that's hard work. And for those of you who are not aware of it yet, there was a proposal on the ballot in regard to a millage for fiber internet broadband, Holland City Fiber, that passed last night. If you are expecting the BPW trucks to go rolling up in front of your house tomorrow, Mr. Freeman, it will take them some time to be able to get things ordered. Well, because you've asked for it to be at your house first, all along. The estimates are approximately two years before everything's in full swing, but we have to remember there are supply chain issues, there are employee issues throughout the country, but I think that we're ahead of the wave of a lot of folks that are going to be looking at broadband projects. Very exciting project for the city, very pleased that the Holland City voters chose to allow us to move forward with that. And I am sure that the Holland Board of Public Works is going to live up to their motto of local, reliable, efficient, and essential, not only with water, wastewater, electricity, and broadband, a part of the city, but now broadband to the entire city. So congratulations to the City of Holland, the people of the City of Holland for that. And that is all that I have this evening. Any communications, motions, appointments from council members? Seeing none, I would, oh, yes, go ahead, Ms. Coronado, yes.
I was going through some things and I seen cookies for sale that, I guess my daughter might have been 10, but it was to mark the beginning of the annual Girl Scout Cookie Sale, Brownies 2749 presented a box of cookies to Mayor Al McGee. The troop consisted of girls in second grade and the leader, myself, the scouts began taking cookies, cookie orders. So I just thought that was a throwback. I know it's not Throwback Thursday, but I guess I...
I was, I didn't realize you had those there. I was just going to say, the mayor is more than happy to accept Girl Scout cookies.
Are those cookies from that sale?
It's just, I was going to say...
They're not from that sale. They're newer.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Yes. Any other communications from council members? I would entertain a motion to go into a closed session for a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager pursuant to a written request for a closed session.
So moved?
Support.
It is moved by Hookstra, support by Aaron Sors. Before we do the roll call vote on that, I just want to let members of the public know that we're not going to be engaging in any business following that closed session. We will come out of the close, what we may discuss, we may discuss, we may discuss afterwards, discuss afterwards, you're more, afterwards, you're more than, afterwards, you're more than willing to, afterwards, you're more than willing to do that, you're more than willing to do that as well, than willing to do that as well. I just wanted to do that as well. I just want to make sure that as well. I just want to make sure everybody, well, I just want to make sure everybody knows, just want to make sure everybody knows, make sure everybody knows, everybody knows what it is that may be happening or not happening. So we have a motion, we have support. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnzors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yep.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Yeah, we're going to, so we, yep.